Oh, there we are. Okay. We're to call to order this public hearing by the Committee on Early, Early Human Justice for Education and First Generation Peasants. Today is Monday, March 9, 2015, and it is that meeting. So, our agenda includes the confirmation hearing for the appointment of Dr. Lisa Bazac Cruz to the Commission for Educators Certification numbers. And then we also have Bill Number 2133, the OR, which is President Grant McCready, which is an amendment to Amendment Subsection 106, we have her five titles, Nineteen Guam Code Annuated, while they were providing this question to the Office of the Attorney General with regards to without having education defined or developed for certain purposes. We decided to get the juvenile justice reform act from the House of Representatives. And the third item about Senator, Senator Monsignor David Kedigwa, and we have Jane Flores. If you would all just come up. We have, oh, just written, Monsignor, you just submitted, Monsignor, a written testimony? Oh, okay. All right, okay. So, we have three. Okay. So, we'll start with Ms. Leah Santos.
Honorable, good afternoon, Honorable Senators Underwood, Torres, McCready, and Ugin. Half a day, I'm Leah Santos, the Executive Director of the Guam Commission for Educators Certification. I support the reappointment of Dr. Lisa Bazac Cruz to the Guam Commission for Educators Certification. Her appointment meets the requirement of Public Law 29-73 for one of the two members with a terminal degree in education from an accredited university. GCEC Vice Chair Bazac Cruz has been a dedicated member of the Commission. She previously served as a Treasurer from 2011 to 2014. As a former GDOE Special Education Teacher and current GCC English Department Chairperson Professor, she provides a wide perspective of the many challenges that the education system faces. As a developmental education reading teacher, she firmly believes in the importance of preparing our students to become successful and effective readers and is a strong advocate for the praxis tests. She believes that the integrity of the certification process must be protected at all times. The nominee has a proven record of commitment to education. She was a special education teacher for eight years prior to moving to GCC. She has been with the English Department since 1990. That has 30 years of teaching experience. She has been recognized by her peers and is listed in the Who's Who among America's teachers and in Cambridge Who's Who Registry of Executives and Professionals. I humbly ask the Ilha Hesaturanguam for your favorable consideration of Dr. Lisa Bazac Cruz's appointment. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Ms. Santos. I would like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Jimmy Asfaldon. Thank you. And so, Ms. Flores.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. I am here on behalf of GCC President, Dr. Mary Okada. She is currently in a tri-board meeting and could not be here today. So, she asked me to read her testimony to the committee. Goodness and half a day, Speaker, Senator Underwood and committee members. It is my honor to recommend the reconfirmation of Dr. Lisa Bazac Cruz as a member of the Guam Commission for Educators Certification. Dr. Bazac Cruz has served on the GCEC since 2011. She was a Commission Treasurer for two years and currently serves as the Vice Chair and as a member of the Appeals Committee. The Commission is tasked with ensuring the integrity of educators certification for teachers, administrators, counselors, anyone who comes in contact with the thousands of students in Guam's public education and ODA arenas. I cannot think of anyone more suited to continuing this work than Dr. Bazac Cruz as she possesses outstanding professional and personal standards. At GCC, in addition to serving as the Chair of our English Department, Dr. Bazac Cruz currently sits on the General Education Committee at the college. This committee is tasked with reviewing, exploring, and assessing the effectiveness of general education policies and procedures at GCC and making recommendations to administrators, the faculty senate, and department and committee chairpersons. A team player possessing incredible depth of knowledge of educational processes and procedures, Dr. Bazac Cruz has contributed greatly to the superior educational standards at Guam Community College. Dr. Bazac Cruz has brought these same professional and personal strengths to the Guam Commission for Educators Certification. If reconfirmed, which I strongly recommend, she will do her utmost to continue to ensure that all of the educators that teach in our island school system are highly qualified and adhere to professional standards. The GEC, GCEC works because of strong, effective professional members like Dr. Bazac Cruz. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on her behalf today. Sincerely, Dr. Mary Okada, President, Guam Community College.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. I also would like to acknowledge Vice Speaker BJ Cruz in attendance. Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Doctor, Dr. Lisa Bazac Cruz.
Yes, Senator.
Do you have a testimony? Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'd like to say just a couple of things. I've been on the Commission for three years, and I believe that this experience has truly allowed me to participate with other colleagues in ensuring the integrity of teacher certification on island. I am not versed in many areas, but with the other members on this Commission, we are able to provide each from our own area what our thoughts are regarding the teaching of students in the public school system and in other educational arenas. I truly enjoy this Commission.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would like to ask any of my colleagues who'd like to say something. Senator Torres.
Dr. Bazac Cruz, Lisa, I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve. I know that in your professional realm and in your personal life, you probably have so many obligations and commitments. So, it's very heartwarming to know that there are professionals like you who are so dedicated to the field and to your community to want to continue on this board. And I just want to say, I had the opportunity to also observe you in personal social arenas, and I think that you do possess the good judgment to always be professional and tactful in whatever circumstance or situation I've seen you in. So, you have my overwhelming support, and I just want to thank you first and foremost for agreeing to serve.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Senator Ugin.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Ms. Bazac Cruz. Thank you also for extending yourself and wanting to continue your service in this particular capacity. I guess one of the questions I have is something that's lingering, and I know the good chairperson has a public hearing on a piece of legislation that there were a large number of educators who stepped forward and expressed their concerns with regards to the impact of that particular proposal. And I know the Certification Board endorsed that proposal, but listening and looking at some of the specific provisions within that proposal, are you open to at least revisiting that proposal and allowing the process to proceed in terms of receiving public comments?
Senator, I am unsure as to what proposal you are discussing.
This is the legislation that was enacted in December that impacted a number of educators, allowing the Certification Board to be able to rescind certification, teacher certification, granting that. And I know Ms. Santos is very well versed in this, and I supported the legislation. But a number of educators have really stepped forward and asked if the legislature could reconsider and if perhaps the Certification Board would reconsider just certain provisions and not the entire concept or the entire proposal.
If I'm not mistaken, if this is the GFT, GCEC concern, the suit, because it is in the legal arena right now, I would prefer not to comment on that.
So, there's been a lawsuit filed? Because, I mean, if that's the case, Madam Chair, then, you know, I understand that you're proceeding with some public discussion on that measure. But I'll leave it at that, and I'll just take the guidance of the Chair. But Ms. Bazac Cruz, I just wanted to understand if, in fact, you were open to allowing a revisit of that based on some of the concerns that were raised. But because it's under possible litigation right now, I'll rescind that question.
The GFT filed a civil suit in district court last Monday, last week.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I would hope, thank you, Ms. Bazac Cruz, and best wishes in your continued service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, Lisa, we have actually talked together at one time. It's special education. It's good to see you again. And I too thank you for your service and being willing to sit on the Commission. I am just wondering, what were some of the challenges that you have encountered as a board member?
I think some of the challenges, just more recently, is the changeover. We have new appointees because others have completed their terms. A lot of history goes with them. A lot of the research goes with them. A lot of the discussions in terms of the decision-making has gone with them. But I think that will be a challenge, but I think it's also something that the Commission itself looks forward to having them still attend our meetings and provide assistance if needed. So, I don't, I haven't seen anything else that I find a major concern. I think we work very well together, and I think we can, we continue to ensure the integrity of our charge.
So, as a member of the Commission, what would be your three top priorities?
Right now, I think we're looking at ensuring that the praxis tests that are to be taken, that we keep up with what the changes are, especially the specific content areas. I think another thing would be ensuring that we keep abreast of current trends in education, both at the local level as well as the national level, so that we can be prepared and provide assistance as needed by educators on island. And to be open to educators coming in and providing input from their perspective. And as we deliberate and talk with them, make effective decisions.
Okay. Well, is there anything else you'd like to add relative to your position? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Santos. Thank you, Ms. Flores. So, let's move on to Bill Number 2133. And I would like to allow Senator Grant McCready to offer brief remarks on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for holding today's hearing. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank the panel, Attorney General's Office, public defenders as well. Bill 2133, also known as the Juvenile Justice Reform Act, is a bill intended to provide youth offenders ages 16 and up to their 18th birthday a chance to avoid automatic certification as an adult for certain crimes. Now, under current law, any child age 16 up to their 18th birthday who is charged with any second degree or first degree felony is automatically certified as an adult and has their case tried in adult court. Now, Bill 2133 allows the Attorney General's Office the discretion in waiving the automatic certification if it is in the best interest of the child, which is the bill's intent. Now, this is not a get out of jail free card for any child or any offender. However, this may start a process to what I think would be restorative justice. So, I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak on the bill and having a public hearing, and I look forward to the panel's suggestions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator McCready. Okay, let's start. We have Michaela Henderson, Eric Miller, Attorney General Barrett Anderson, and we have Carol Hinkle Sanchez. Okay. So, let's start with Attorney General.
All right. I didn't sign up first, but that's okay. Thank you for the courtesy. I do have a 3:00 meeting. Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning, Senator McCready and all the members of the committee. The Office of the Attorney General and I support the bill. I support the overall purpose and intent of the bill. I do want to indicate that my oral testimony is going to be a little bit different than my written testimony, based on our review of the public defender's concerns here as well as some discussions with the Vice Speaker. The history is this, senators, and I certainly had many situations where a 16-year-old is certified automatically as an adult. And this is not certifying up, but an automatic certification where a 16-year-old is charged with a first degree or second degree felony. I support automatic certification. I'm not asking for that to be changed. But I am asking the lawmakers to consider legislation, whether in the form of Senator McCready's bill or in the reform of, form of a substitute language, to allow the judges, the prosecutor's office, and defense councils and the defendant, on behalf of the defendant, to seek another avenue. Because at age 16, you still have to look at the best interest of that child. I've been a family court judge for half of my career as a judge, and I have seen many cases in front of me where I found that the adult prosecution, juvenile justice system, is not predisposed to really resolve what are the issues before a 16-year-old minor. Without giving any name, I'll give you one example. Young man of age 16 was drunk driving, and in the passenger seat was his best friend. Young man got into an accident, and his best friend died. Under automatic certification, he was charged with vehicular homicide. That case came to me, and during the course of the criminal case, it was determined that the young 16-year-old man had a severe alcohol problem at age 16. I was at the time also operating juvenile drug court, and we needed to get this young man into juvenile drug court. The environment the young man came from was an alcoholic home. Is it possible to cure somewhat at age 16 from alcohol? It's as hard as it is to cure an adult. Alcohol is not age-specific, and the difficulties of treatment of alcohol are the same whether you're young or an adult. It took me, it took the process, not just me, over a year, working with the Attorney General's Office, working with defense councils, to come to an agreement to allow that minor to go into family court. It is possible right now to do that, but someone gave me a perfect example of what you call that process, because there's no legal process for it. You certify up, you automatically certify, but there's no process of going back down. It doesn't exist in the statute, and that's why we're here. That's why we're here. I love the term, it was called the MacGyver process. And it was, how can we do it despite the fact that there's nothing in the statute that allows us to do it? And yet, we know, we know that that's the best process in this situation. Not every situation is going to fall into that. And so, what I'd like to see the law do is that on motion of the trial judge, the adult trial judge, on motion of the defense counsel, on motion of the prosecutor, that the consideration and the factors, there'd be factors. In fact, I have to compliment public defender Michaela Silke for coming up with her research in the Illinois process that sets out the criteria. That's great, and we support that. We support the criteria that either the trial judge, but I do want to encourage it that it be the family court judge, that there be a process, that it goes from the adult trial court down into the family court, the family court judge, and based on those criteria. The family court makes a determination of how this matter can be MacGyvered down, decertified down. There are a lot of ins and outs here. Well, you know, judges have assignments. The clerk of court has a process to follow. So, this is a matter that if we can get to a core agreement, and I think we do, Michaela said, oh, how nice, the public defender and the AG actually agree on something today, which is wonderful. I'd like to see that all the time, because I think there's really not much difference in terms of the best interest of the criminal justice system between what the public defender does and we do at prosecution. If we can get to the core issue through a piece of legislation that accomplishes that, then perhaps let the Superior Court of Guam deal with the mechanisms between the trial court and the family court judge and how it goes and what's the motion or what's the process. But we do support a process in law, not just MacGyver, in law, that permits suis ponti, the trial judge, the prosecutor, or defense counsel to get those considerations heard and decided by a family court judge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney General. You now have, I should have just gone down the line. We, Michaela Henderson.
Turn on. Today, we agree, and I'm going to mark it down, March 9, 2015, but we are an adversarial system, which means that for juveniles to have justice, we really need input from the court, from the child's attorney, and from the Attorney General's Office. And my problem with the proposed act the way it is is that it doesn't give any discretion at all to the courts, and I don't think that we can have justice for juveniles if we're only listening to the voice of one of the three parts that we need. And by way of background, I agree, I think we're in agreement about needing an amendment here. When you look at the background and the way the other 50 states are treating juveniles and the certification for court, 49 out of 50 states have a process which presumes juveniles are going to be heard in juvenile court. And if there is a unique situation or circumstance, they can bump them up to adult court. And 43 states say you've got to have a hearing to get someone in adult court, and 39 states say you've got to consider factors, that there'll be factors like the nature and background, what the intellectual maturities of the child, how serious the offense is, and you consider all these factors together to determine whether or not a child can be heard in adult court. In Guam, we're the only place besides Connecticut that's got this blanket automatic certification. We don't have factors or a hearing or any court discretion. And so, I support an amendment to this that would, excuse me, allow for, excuse me, the situation where we don't all and can all agree. There are two other components that I would ask for justice reform for juveniles to include, and the first is the codification of a case called Miller versus Alabama, which is a 2012 Supreme Court case, which says that juveniles, no child can serve a sentence of life without parole in any situation because it's cruel and unusual punishment. We've still got a Guam law for aggravated murder that does have a mandatory sentence of life without parole. Under Miller versus Alabama, that would be an unconstitutional sentence. Other states had similar statutes, and what they did is they did juvenile justice laws that codified Miller versus Alabama and said, except for juveniles, we can't have the life without parole. The second issue for juvenile justice reform, I think, is we really, we need statutory rape laws. And that's something that I feel really strongly about. If I have to go door to door with my PowerPoint presentation, I will. I think there are six really major problems here that we treat teenagers the same as we treat dangerous adult pedophiles. But for the automatic certification issue, I would ask that you consider having an amendment here. I like Illinois statute because I think they do a really good job of setting forth the different factors that everyone can look at. And frankly, I think that the child's attorney might be in the best place to advocate because we're in a place to gather information about the background, about what's going on in school, and whether or not someone really can be amenable to rehabilitation. The Supreme Court says that they can't tell the difference between a child who's got transient immaturity that is committing offense versus the rare child that can't be rehabilitated and is irreparably corrupt. And so, here, to make that choice in Guam, I would ask that we weigh in the voices, give the court discretion, allow us to do our job and advocate for the child, and allow the Attorney General's Office to do their part so that we can truly have justice where we have all three voices at the table.
Thank you very much, Ms. Henderson. Do we have, we have Carol? No? You're, and, yes. We have Mr. Merrill.
Thank you.
Yes. Please speak to the microphone.
Thank you. I've been representing juveniles for 40-some years, including even before Vice Speaker Cruz some years ago. And there's another angle of this whole issue that I think the legislature needs to consider, and that is, across the country, there is a new wave of considering sentencing called smarter sentencing. And that is to look at some social science and put some analysis into how you're sentencing people. It's focused mostly on adults, but the reason I raise it here is, there's a fiscal note to this that we haven't discussed. If you take a 16-year-old child and you automatically certify them for some of our offenses that have mandatory minimum time, they could easily rack up five, 10, 15 years that they have to do by statute that they can't suspend. If you take a 16-year-old and you put him in prison for 10 years, when he gets out, you have a fairly well-trained criminal coming back into your community. If you take a 16-year-old and put him through family court where he receives treatment, maybe medication, counseling, some other support factors, maybe you've got a young person who's back in your community who's not draining your resources at DOC and being trained by his now peers, his role models are now lifers at DOC. You can be creating certain monsters that you have to deal with later if you don't think smart now and say, okay, here we have a young person in our community that we can actually turn around, and now we can't do it because by statute, the court doesn't have any discretion. They're automatically certified. If they're convicted, they may be facing five, 10, or 15 years of unsuspendable sentences. So, this would give you some, this would give the court some opportunity to put some smart thinking into how you deal with your younger offenders. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone who would like to make a comment or ask questions? Yes, Senator McCready?
Not really a question, just thank you guys for sharing your testimony. And what we can do, Madam Chair, if you allow us, that we, my office will work with you guys on those amendments, and let's get the other branches involved as well so the discretion is passed out between the AGs, the public defender, and the courts, and let's move in that direction. But I have no problem with taking your amendments and including them in the bill to make the bill stronger and the intent a little more clear and specific. So, thank you very much. If you take a 16-year-old and put him through family court where he receives treatment, maybe medication, counseling, some other support factors, maybe you've got a young person who's back in your community who's not draining your resources at DOC and being trained by his now peers, his role models are now lifers at DOC. You can be creating certain monsters that you have to deal with later if you don't think smart now and say, okay, here we have a young person in our community that we can actually turn around, and now we can't do it because by statute, the court doesn't have any discretion. They're automatically certified. If they're convicted, they may be facing five, 10, or 15 years of unsuspendable sentences. So this would give you some, this would give the court some opportunity to put some smart thinking into how you deal with your younger offenders. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone who would like to make a comment or ask questions? Yes, Senator McCready?
Not really a question, just thank you guys for sharing your testimony. And what we can do, Madam Chair, if you allow us, that we, my office will work with you guys on those amendments, and let's get the other branches involved as well so the discretion is passed out between the AGs, the public defender, and the courts, and let's move in that direction. But I have no problem with taking your amendments and including them in the bill to make the bill stronger and the intent a little more clear and specific. So thank you very much.
Speaker, Speaker, please.
Thank you very much. Until today, I didn't realize that it's been 20 years since I sat as a family court judge.
You don't.
No. 30 years ago, I sat as the family court judge, but it's been 20 years since I was the family court judge. I left family court in '95 to do general jurisdiction. And I didn't realize that in the interim 20 years, that the legislature went to this automatic certification. And I'd always thought that there was a process that we had where we could, when you were practicing before me, Mr. Miller, if the person was, you know, incorrigible, we would be able to certify him up. And I didn't realize that there wasn't this process still until I spoke to General Anderson, and she mentioned that the process was no longer there. I didn't realize how much power we had way back and it's since we lost. And unfortunately, it is this automatic certification, but we're not going to get into that at this point because I think we'll all disagree on that and we'll all disagree on your other parts, your third concern. But I think we can all agree that we need to address statutorily a process by which we can address the needs of a minor. And it would seem to me that, at least in my discussion with the General and Ms. Hinkle Sanchez, that the family court judge is the person who is very intimately knowledgeable about the way to be able to review this. And that, and you mentioned this is a three-legged stool, that we need the judiciary involved. And the fact that the judiciary isn't here today, Madam Chair, I'd ask that we put off reporting this bill out until we get testimony from the judiciary. I do know that you and Senator Uggan, and I think Senator McCready may have been invited to the judiciary. The Chief Justice, in his last State of the Judiciary address, made juvenile reform as the theme for his, this year. And he's had some meetings, he's had the Robert F. Kennedy people out here to try to deal with some of the social science issues that you mentioned, Mr. Miller, and trying to be proactive and bring us into the 21st century in dealing with juvenile justice. So I really would, and I know that the Chief Justice and the, I think, the Administrator of the Court, and the Clerk of the Court, and everybody's away at the Pacific Judicial Conference, and so they're not here today. So I really would like for an opportunity for the court to weigh in, to try to figure out a way that we can do this. And so I want to thank Ms. Hinkle, I mean, Ms. Hinkle for coming with the General today to discuss the proposal that was proffered by Ms. Henderson about wanting to do the Illinois system. I mean, those were the criteria that we used 30 years ago when you were appearing before me, Mr. Miller, of being able to determine whether or not we kept them down and we sent them up. And so now, it's now it's the other way, it's trying to decide to send them down. But my concern was, was that having an adult judge trying to determine whether or not the juvenile court had any process, it would seem to me that if the juvenile judge, if the motion was made before the juvenile judge, or a special proceeding was instituted before the special, before the juvenile judge, that the juvenile court judge would be able to say, I believe that there is a process with the IEPs, with all the treatment teams put together that we can deal with this child. And so I'd like the opportunity to be able to get the court involved in this. And since I know this is the signature theme for the Chief Justice's year, I think it's imperative that we get the judiciary involved in this. And so I'd like to ask that we delay action on this until we can get the judiciary and maybe have them in on a roundtable or something to discuss the way that we can statutorily MacGyver this or MacGyver this into statute. Because we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be creating things that aren't in there. And I appreciate the fact that there's, there was trying to find a process, and I know Ms. Sanchez and Senator McCready discussed this. Though I've been here for a long time, I'm still very protective about taking any powers away from the judge. I didn't realize that had been taken away from us a long time ago. But if we can all get together, I think we can work to the best interest of the minor and with the Chief Justice's new program for this year. This fits perfectly into his program that he has everybody coming out for, and I think is being discussed current, as we speak at the Pacific Judicial Conference, it's all juvenile justice. And so I'd like to ask if we could wait until they get back, and then we'll take this up again. But I thank all of you, and I thank you for contacting my office with your testimony. And General, thank you very much for coming by today to discuss the public defender's suggestion in bringing me into the 21st century. I'm still living 1995.
Senator Torres, or Senator Esfaldon, do you have any?
Okay. Well, I thank you very much, too. I really am in agreement that before we make a decision about the lives of our children, especially our youth, that we take everything into consideration. It's good to see two groups that otherwise are on opposite ends working together on behalf of our youth. Okay. Well, the third item on our agenda is Bill Number 4333, COR, which I authored. Okay. So let me give you a little bit of background regarding the amendment that we're proposing. One time, I believe that was 2005, one of the concerns that was raised about, relative to the Adequate Education Act, was that it dealt primarily with the operational issues pertaining to educating our students. And it didn't address student achievement, which is at the heart of our mission. We want to ensure that our students actually are meeting the standards that are prescribed for each grade level and each content area. So there was an amendment that was made, an addition, which we basically noted that achievement of our students should be an integral part of the Adequate Education Act, and that should be measured by SAT-10 every year and by a certain percentage, I think five percentile points every year, for the next 10 years until they reach 90% and at the competency level. And so now, of course, SAT-10 is no longer used, and it's no longer produced. And the Department of Education, in making its, an effort to align the district assessment with the core standards, have actually looked into other assessments and have decided to adopt the ACT ASPIRE. And so this amendment is to address that section that specifically addressed SAT-10 for student achievement. So right now, I would like to call Ms. Eloise Sanchez and also Dr. Zenaida Nativida to please come up. Okay, we'll start with Eloise. Please state your name and your position.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Senators. My name is Eloise Sanchez. I am the Acting Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum and Instructional Improvement. I'm here also to represent the Superintendent, Mr. John J.P. Fernandez. We'd also like to introduce Dr. Zenaida Nativida, who will be here and provide some information as well if there are inquiries regarding that. I'd like to go ahead and proceed with the written testimony. The Guam Department of Education strongly supports the passage of Bill Number 43-33 that proposes to revise GCA 3107 relative to increasing student academic performance as measured by SAT-10 for the following reasons. The proposed bill removes SAT-10 and changes the language of the law to a generic statement of measuring student performance. This proposed language has more enduring quality in that the law does not need to be changed every time the Guam Department of Education adopts an assessment system that meets current needs and conditions as discussed in Items 1 to 3 below. Furthermore, specific mention to a test product such as SAT-10 that is clearly associated with a vendor, which is Pearson, in a Guam public law is potentially in conflict with the Procurement Act. Items 1 to 3 below are specified conditions that led to the DOE decision to change from SAT-10 to another assessment system. The SAT-10 is retiring as of March 30, 2016. The department received a letter from Pearson, the developer and supplier of SAT-10, last September 17, 2014, regarding the product retirement of the Stanford Achievement Test Series 10th Edition. The letter indicated that the SAT-10 will no longer be available for purchase as of March 30, 2016. We've also attached that as an exhibit for you to see. The Guam Education Board adopted the Common Core State Standards in February 2012. The Guam Department of Education conducted a series of district and school-wide training to prepare the staff for the district-wide implementation. In August 2014, the Department of Education implemented the Common Core State Standards district-wide. With the implementation of the Common Core, the department also needed to realign the student summative assessment administered every spring to be aligned with the Common Core State Standards. On September 23, 2014, the Guam Education Board adopted the State Strategic Plan and the Comprehensive Student Assessment System. The SSP and the CSAS are both aligned to the Common Core. The C-SAC, I'm sorry, the CSAS comprises of standards-based formative assessments, interim assessments, and summative assessments, which are, again, all aligned to the Common Core. The passage of Bill 43-33 will significantly help the Department of Education in its efforts to align the adopted curriculum and student assessments. With the upcoming district-wide assessments next month, GDOE strongly recommends the expeditious passage of Bill Number 43-33. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Dr. Nativida, did you want to give testimony?
I have no testimony other than, good afternoon. Honorable Senators.
State your name.
My name is Zenaida Nativida. I am the Administrator of Research Planning and Evaluation, and I'm filling in a very big shoe. That was, she's my former boss, really good one. I have no written testimony. In fact, I did not plan on saying anything other than the fact that if there's anyone who can propose a change on the law, it is Senator Underwood herself. She knew assessment very well, and in light of what we have, we are doing with the Common Core State Standards, it's very clear that we need to change the assessment system because SAT-10 is a norm reference testing, and we now need standards-based testing. So that is the very, one of the very reasons, too, that we have to change the assessment system. Thank you.
Very much. Dr. Nativida, I would like to yield to any of my colleagues, any comments? I do have a question. You know, we do have public law 13-26, I believe, that requires for the Department of Education to have both a norm reference test and a criterion reference test. And so to the extent that that is still a mandate, that's changing this or changing the assessments, will that affect that public law or compliance to that public law?
To my understanding of the ACT ASPIRE, which we have adopted, it has also a norm reference component in which we're able to compare the performance of our students against the performance of the rest of the nation. So we can also talk about the percentile points that we used to talk about in SAT-10. However, the focus of the reporting will now be performance levels relative to the various categories in Common Core. That is, whether our children are ready for college or career, or are they not ready, or do they need assistance.
And that is the criterion reference?
Yes, yes.
Component of ACT ASPIRE?
Yes, Senator.
Okay. So just for my colleagues' information here, what it is, is that with the ACT ASPIRE, it would actually indicate the extent to which our students are ready for college and career. So there is a score that they would get. But it's also prescriptive for teachers in that the results would actually let the teachers know what specific areas they would need to pay attention to, and also the kinds of strategies, I believe, that they would need to address. It's a very, very impressive assessment. So we're hoping that through this and with the adoption of the Common Core, that we really will see so much more success among our students. Do you have anything else to say?
Just to reiterate the fact that because we're testing already next week, I mean, next month, I'm sorry, that we strongly encourage the honorable legislature to approve this bill as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Esfaldon.
Madam Chair, if I may, now that you've brought that up again, you'll be administering the test next month, you say, and I'm assuming you're administering not the SAT-10?
No.
It'll be the?
ACT ASPIRE.
ACTS. So, and that's given the fact that we've switched to Common Core?
Yes, sir.
Already?
Yes, sir.
So in a sense, I mean, I understand the bill, but in a sense, you went on ahead absent anything in law and go ahead and prepare because it's only appropriate. Right? I mean, and again, I'm just noting that you called for an emergency action, expedition action, and I understand that, and you went on ahead and did it. And again, I just want to make sure that the test that you've been planning for, with, if this bill did not pass for whatever reason, or if it did not hit the floor this session, that you would still proceed on with the new testing as opposed to SAT-10, correct?
We are, sir. However, as a background, I do know, sir, that since we, before we even implemented the Common Core in August 2014, that there were already works, already in the way to change the language of the law. How it got to this point, only this late, I do not know what transaction. But as soon as we started talking about Common Core, and as soon as, when I rejoined the department in January last year, and I found out that we are going to switch, that was the first thing I told everybody, that we need to change the law, we need to change the law. And when I was checking on it, they said, oh, there's already discussions on that. So, you know, I left it at that.
You just kind of backed off, knowing full well that it'd probably be taken care of.
Yes, of course.
And of course, as soon as the Senator got elected, I think you were kind of guaranteed that it was going to be switched, right?
[laughing]
And that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to find out, make sure.
Truly appreciate Senator Underwood for acting fast on that.
Okay. Well, you know, I, let me, Senator Esfaldon, you know, I take responsibility for that because we have been in conversation regarding the change. And I could have introduced it, right, on the first session?
No, I just was wondering, because according to what I just found out today, and I'm not familiar with the situation, that it is in law, SAT-10 is specifically mentioned in law. So really, by law, you should have been preparing for the SAT-10 application, technically. I'm just saying that.
Right.
And that's why I had to at least ask the question, that past the technicality, that you went on ahead and prepared for an application of a test that was not a SAT-10, but it was based more in conformance with the curriculum that you're teaching now. And I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. And that's the case.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, anyone else? Well, I thank you very much, Ms. Sanchez and Dr. Nativida. Good to see both of you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much, Julius Mahosi, for your presence and public testimony. Thank you very much, Jesus Mahosi, for your presence and public testimony this afternoon. The committee will continue to accept testimony until 5:00 PM Friday, March 13, 2015. Testimonies may be submitted to Guam Legislature 155 Hasler Place, via email at C I P O at GuamLegislature.org, or via fax at 671-969-0975. The public hearing is now adjourned. The time right now is 2:50 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.